This meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided in that, I don't know what that means, but in that on some day, whatever day it was, a copy of this notice with specifying the date, time, and location was posted on the bulletin board on the outside of Borough Hall, mailed to the Messenger Gazette and Courier News. Messenger Gazette?
Yeah.
You're showing your age. You're showing your age.
Yeah, and given to the clerk administrator. If any member of this body believes that this meeting is being held in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, please state your views at this time and specify the reasons supporting your belief that the notice is improper. Hearing none, we move to the next item on the agenda, which is roll call, I believe.
Chairman Adair advised he would be absent. Mr. Rejebits?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenterz?
Yes.
Mr. Videmski?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin is absent. Mr. O'Neil?
Here.
Mr. Alott?
Here.
Mr. Flores?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Here.
I believe the next item on the agenda is, uh, sort of this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, continuing on the, uh, agenda, uh, we need to, uh, vote on the minutes of the January eighteenth meeting. Uh, anyone, uh...
Oh, Mr. ...
Say it. Yes.
Ms. Carpenterz?
Yes.
Mr. Videmski?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Alott?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Okay, we have, uh, three resolutions to, uh, vote on. The first one is, uh, Joe Precario, general contractor. Can I have a motion?
Take a motion, move it.
Any second?
I'll second.
Uh, vote on that.
Mr. Rejebits?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenterz?
Uh, abstain as I wasn't here for the hearing.
Mr. Videmski?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin? I'm sorry, Mr. O'Neil?
Abstain, I wasn't here for the hearing.
Mr. Alott?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Um, abstain, I wouldn't be part of this.
And Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Do we have a, do we have many enough votes?
Yep. Majority of those who voted for the application, so we're, uh, we're in good shape.
Okay. Next, so that's passed. Resolution's passed for Joe Precario, general contractors, uh, eighty-five West High Street. Next one is a FENCO application, sixty-four Mercer Street. Can we have a, a motion on that?
Take a motion.
Anyone second?
Second.
Okay. Let's have a vote.
Mr. Rejebits?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenterz?
Uh, abstain as I wasn't present.
Mr. Videmski?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Abstain, effective property owner.
Mr. Alott?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Passed. FENCO, sixty-four Mercer Street is passed resolution.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very...
Uh, the last resolution we're gonna, I contain tonight is McLeavy, one thirty-one High Street. I have a motion at all?
I'll do it.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Rejebits?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenterz?
Yes.
Mr. Videmski?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Abstain, business conflict.
Mr. Alott?
Abstain, conflict.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
All right, that is passed. McLeavy is passed. Uh, now, I wonder, um, so those resolutions are, are done, passed, affirmatively. Um, we have, I just want to flip flop, cause, uh, Rich O'Neil here cannot stay for the number six, the Kaufman, uh, application, but he does wanna, uh, participate in a waiver request for Lindley Realty LLC. So, uh, I would like to flip flop number six from number seven. Is there any objection to that? Okay, no problem with it. All right. Um, Mr. Givens?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you take over at this point?
You mean in terms of, uh, Kaufman?
No, waive, the waiver.
Okay.
Lindley, I know, um, Mr. O'Neil has an objection to, seems to be a conflict with, uh, who it...
Oh, no, I know. I know, I reviewed, I just, I wanted to just, we, you know, there's some concern that the board, for some reason, is, you know, is not able to hear this, or that there has to be some other approval. Reality is, is under the law, the board does have the authority, uh, to approve such a waiver. We could not be in a position where the applicant had no recourse in order to obtain a waiver. Uh, and to have an independent board, you know, be in a position where it's an advisory board and, you know, passing on something like this is not as positive as to the applicant, is not as positive as to the request. So, the board does have jurisdiction to hear this. I mean, I believe, I understand there had been a, and I'm not gonna, you know, disagree necessarily, I knew your redevelopment council very well, but I don't know that that was the correct opinion. I understood there was a previous opinion rendered that, you know, that they had nowhere else to go, and I know Mr. Galvin had counter-rehanded that, and I'm counter-rehanding it, being a redevelopment attorney myself. The board does have the au- authority to hear the waiver request and adjudicate it.
Okay, Mr. O'Neil, does ask comments on that?
My comment is, we have a borough ordinance that is a east Main Street redevelopment plan, which was adopted by the Borough Council. In that, it says specifically, it unbriefed, "No variance from the requirements herein shall be heard by the Board of Adjustment. The planning board alone shall have the authority to grant deviations from the requirements of the plan." That's what happened, probably.
By my professional opinion, the MLUOL supersedes the local ordinance.
That may well be, but now we've got the credit situation where this applicant is gonna now have to go to Architectural Review Board, extending the courts of Review Board. Three boards for one sign is typical government, and I'm not a fan of typical government. It's too cumbersome, it's a waste of time, effort, and money, and I don't know how it got rooted here, I'm not sure, because the candidates have worked, don't really care. If the ordinance is wrong, let's get it changed. If the ordinance, if we're doing the bye-bye ordinance, then the bye-bye ordinance. We live in this town.
I think, I think the ordinance may need to be changed.
It well did, but meantime, we have an applicant that now has to appear before three boards, and that's nuts.
No, no, I understand that, but to close the door at this point to this applicant, it doesn't sound like that's what you're doing.
No.
Because, you know, we would have issues with, frankly, we would have constitutional law issues with regard to property rights. Uh, I believe that it may be appropriate for the board to, uh, amend the ordinance to indicate that, to, to indicate that, you know, that, that relief can be requested as is allowed under, which probably what it should've said is relief can be requested as is permitted under the municipal land use law, and...
This is a simple sign application. It's not the Empire State Building. It's a simple sign on the side of a small building. This is completely bureaucratic and nuts. How it got here, I don't know.
I, I promise you, I, I...
No, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, we gotta sit here and look at these things sometimes. How is this going on, and why is it going on?
Well, I think the funny thing is, is based on my investigation, apparently, Mr. Galvin gave you a similar opinion to what I gave you a couple of years ago, that, you know, that this, that this was, that it was not appropriate to have such an ordinance that essentially limited the remedies of the, of the property owner.
There's no, the remedy here would be go to the Architectural Review Board, probably for a, a short hearing, which would then make a referral to the planning board, and ninety-nine point five percent of the time, the planning board just says, "Okay." Not a...
Right. Well, in this situation, the zoning board can sit in, in, in place of the planning board, that's essentially what we're doing. I mean, I, I, I don't, you know, I understand your frustration, I mean, it does happen.
We put the cart before the horse.
Well, I, I...
Should be an ARB application first.
Well, it, right now, it's an expansion of a non-conforming use, so the ARB can review it, but they can't.
They can't do anything unless we put ass on it.
And the planning board doesn't have jurisdiction because it's an expansion of a non-conforming use.
Correct.
Our borough ordinance ends with a right or wrong.
Our borough ordinance is superseded by the MLUOL, because that is, that is not, that is really not sustained.
I didn't come here from loyalty tonight, I'm just here to say...
No, I know, I realize.
It's a waste of time and money, and people come to these boards, they spend their freaking fortune to get to a board, and then we put up, that's totally nonsense, and this is nonsense. I'd wrestle my case.
No, no, I understand, no, I think your point is well-taken. We're trying to, in, in essence, kinda trying to, uh, you know, do the right thing here, giving the applicant an opportunity to inform, to be heard with respect to this, because I believe the ordinance is, you know, the ordinance of the redevelopment plan, whatever it says, is incorrect in limiting, in limiting the, uh, remedies that the applicant can obtain. So, the fact is, is they've applied to us ordinarily when you have no other recourse of, in, in, in a zoning and planning situation, you don't go to the planning board, you go to the zoning board of adjustment, because under section seventy, it's a special question. And that's what this is. So, we had the opportunity, don't misunderstand me, I wanna make sure the board understands, we didn't just decide, this, Mr. Cole and I discussed this at some length, uh, this is, this is called for under, under section seventy, I believe it's section seventy A, uh, where a special question, which is what this is, can be determined by the board. This, this is a situation where it's not so much a special question, it's where the applicant is essentially foreclosed from any other relief by our own ordinance, so we have to kind of get around that, if you will, and what we're doing is using the MLUOL to do that.
So, if we put a sign up on the bills, and they're getting to the site plan, they've got the surveys, and all this kind of work, that's what, that's what, that's what comes out, and we can waiver that tonight, I presume?
I believe you can, oh yeah, I think you have all, you have all the authorities to waive as the planning board would have, or as you have by your original jurisdiction. So, no, no, you definitely have the authority. I don't want you to think I'm trying to be persnickety here, but we are trying to, I, 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 I do not wanna see them have to jump through three hoops any more than you do. I, I think that that's a, it, it, look, I, I spoke to Mr. Cole, I said, "I believe this was a scrupulous error in preparing this."
Whatever error it is, it's gotta get fixed, it's a public, this is what, it's a public council that gotta fix it. And how do we go about doing that?
Well, I think we would ask Mr., we would probably ask Mr., uh, Solomon to do this, or we would, uh, you know, we would notify, we would, you know, could notify the council. Uh, but on that, we really don't have, we, we, we have no, we have no legislative component we can advise.
And less than watching television, they're not gonna know what we're talking about, and I suspect they're not. Who's gonna tell them to take liberties? Is that us? Is that you? Who does it?
Well, it could be me, it could be myself and Mr. Cole combined, and I'm happy to do it if you wish.
I can write an email to the administrator saying that this should be looked, it's the sentence, Rich.
This is gotta get resolved.
Right. I mean, they've asked for a waiver for the drugs, because they wanna put a wall sign on, I think, what's the shed there.
Yeah.
And...
It's, it's, it's the...
Yes.
So, so what it is, is, uh, I can't grant that waiver, it's only the board can. So...
Who is gonna tell the council, the administrator, that this has gotta be looked at? I don't wanna, I don't wanna walk out here tonight, and I'm not storming out, I'm walking in. I don't wanna walk out here tonight and have this forgotten till next time it occurs.
I'll respond tomorrow to Kevin, and I'll copy Cliff, and Christian. I will copy you, and, uh, I'll cop, copy Dan and, and Art. Can you request, uh, I know you're gonna send an email to Kevin, can you request from Kevin that it be brought to the attention of the council? I don't want to get on Kevin's desk and die.
Yeah.
That's, that's what it would be, it would be a recommendation from the Board of Adjustment to amend this sentence to address the issues that...
That is correct.
Cliff is saying...
They only see the, uh, I know you have a copy of that, I did not, I would, you know, I did not receive it, so I'd like to look at it.
I'll notice you got it, I'll look at it.
Yeah, it's in the back of the redevelopment plan, and Rich is right, it's written in almost all redevelopment plans.
Yeah, exactly.
So, what Rich is saying is, it should be addressed, because it has ramifications on other sites.
Absolutely.
Well, the, the truth is, is that, you know, no variance from the requirements herein shall be heard by the Board of Adjustment, I, I'm troubled by that, because I don't believe, there are, there are instances where, as here, the Board of Adjustment can exercise authority, I've discussed it under section seventy of the MLUOL. No, I think that perhaps, uh...
I can send a detail email.
You can pay their, as the attorney can notify the administrator.
This is how you have to dispute those, I won't worry, I mean, we gotta, we gotta take it, you know?
We have several, I, I understand that we have more than one redevelopment plan that has this language?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
That's why, that's why I jumped out, I mean, I've got a lot of redevelopment plans since the nineteen seventies. I'm a little bit familiar with it.
No, no, I, I understand, I was troubled by it, I, I think, as I said, the, the, the proper language, I think, would've been no variance from requirements, you know, I, I, I would say, any variance from these requirements would be, could be heard and obtained in accordance with the MLUOL. That's how you do it.
We gotta pick a, pick a road to people who know what you're doing, and outstanding a lot of waste, waste of money and time doing, you know, plans and...
Oh, no, I understand, I'm not gonna use this, you know, obviously, I'm, you know, I'm not...
I come from the fire department, we settle issues right away, you wait around.
No, I, I understand, Rich, and I'll get the email out, copying everyone, for Cliff, I'll, I'll, I'll get the language right that you're comfortable with before I send the email.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, it'll, it'll, it's going out tomorrow.
Okay.
No, 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 Rich, it's going out tomorrow, I'm just saying, I'll make sure the language he's comfortable with, it's going out tomorrow.
Okay.
And you're gonna, you're copied on it.
We'll get it done, I know where you live.
Oh, why not?
So, we'll get it right.
Right, and I'll copy Dan and Art, and, uh, it'll say specifically that this should be council, the council agenda, recommendations to be addressed, since it impacts, uh, multiple redevelopments on us.
Okay.
No, I think that's the right way to do it, so, uh, you know, I, I...
You can't stay for the waiver request?
I can for a waiver.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
I, I think since we already beat this dog to death, why don't we, why don't we take, uh, if, um... So, the, the background is, there's an application coming in front of the board.
Is the applicant here?
For a wall sign, that's LED. Excuse me, excuse me, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kaufman, are you here? All right, if, if, uh, will you bear, will you, no, just a minute, will you just bear with us that we're gonna jump in front of you, because, uh, obvious reasons, okay? All right, thank you. So, I am number seven, the waiver request, go ahead, Mike. Okay, uh, normally we get drawings, we sign the plans, we can see what's going on with the sign, they're asking for the, because it's... Are the answers up again? Is anyone here, uh, concerning this? No? Okay, go ahead. So, normally, we get signed, we can sign documents to document what's being done and what the variance of relief being sought is. Uh, because of the nature of the application, being a wall sign, that I do believe it's gonna be in the shed, if you're familiar with the site, I call it a shed, it's a building. It's a building, I think, in the middle of a lot. I've been up there, I haven't been out there for, but you see it, it's got, this is the site that has the monster used car sales in the corner of Mechanic in East Main. So, the applicant's attorney reached out and asked for a waiver for providing the drawings, or survey, anything associated with normally have, survey drawings, and I said to him, "I can't grant that, I will certainly bring that to the board's attention, because the only people that can grant those checklist requirements is this board." So, that's what he's asking for, basically, you're gonna have your pamphlet, uh, the board grants this, is gonna be the LED sign, and there's not gonna be any drawings or surveys to show you what's going on, you're gonna have to go out there and ascertain yourself to what's going on. Uh, so that's what's being passed up the board as a waiver of basically mapping. The only details you're gonna have is, is the sign, essential. So, we're not gonna, we're not gonna vote on that today until... Well, you would be voting on it, whether you grant the waiver or not, if you don't grant the waiver, then he's gonna have to give his drawing, so you could see what's... Is he gonna comply with the, with the sign ordinance as far as the size and... It's, it's an expansion of a non-conforming use, so there is no ordinance. The ordinance is for permitted uses, so you're gonna have to, when you look at the sign, decide whether it's too big, too small, too bright, all that. The board's gonna have to do that, because it's an expansion, it's not a permitted use. So, if you look at the B one and B two standards, those sign ordinances are for permitted use. You can certainly lose, use those as a guide. All right, so, Mike, if he goes and puts a twenty foot by twenty foot sign up there, and we look at it, we tell him, "No," then, then what? Well, then he'd be denying any other thing else, he'd be denying all the variance...
He'd connect it to permit.
Right. So, it's incumbent upon someone to tell him how big this sign can be, correct? Well, he's, he's proposing a sign, and I, I think he's gonna say it's, it's, it's appropriate for the location, but typically, you have drawings to show this, and we, he's asking for no drawings.
He's basically saying, he wants the wave site plan drawings and just essentially represent, represent what the, the size of the sign will be in the appearance of the sign, and, you know, because of the circumstances, I mean, is, is it, is it, is it kind of unusual? Yes, but it's also, you, you had discussed, you know, you, you discussed the issues of, for example, I don't, making someone go to, go to different boards or anything, this is one instance where, uh, we see the, we see a waiver for what would be, you know, formal plans and probably fairly extensive, and expensive, I mean, plans.
If Cliff agrees, what... May I suggest, have him do a drawing of the shed with the sign on it, and hand it back to the board at the next meeting, and we can vote on it, rather than have him, right, rather than have him build us up?
That's exactly what goes on right now in the Architectural Review Board, we get sign applications, we don't get a site survey, we don't get any, we get basically drawings and a picture.
Eighty-five by eleven?
Yeah.
Right, but the difference is, this is an expansion of a non-conforming use, so...
But the sign, the sign's a sign.
I, I agree, but he still has the public notice, and that he has, if he has to comply with the MLUOL, he can't, he can't bypass the MLUOL in that connection, just as we discussed with the, with, with the ordinance for redevelopment. They've gotta be able to come before the board with notice and, and do an application. They're just merely asking for, I don't wanna say merely, but they're asking for a waiver of one of the administrative requirements, which we're allowed to grant under particular fifty-one.
Which we should grant, here's what a sign application is.
To handle it, this, if Cliff agrees, which the board could do, is say, "He's waived if he complies with the sign ordinance in the B one and B two." And if he doesn't comply, he's gotta do the drawings, is that something we can do?
That's fair enough.
And signs, for me, everybody.
So, that, that signs relate to the size of the building and all that stuff, so we can cer, I can give him that information, uh, Mr. Chairman, and we can, if the board should agree, Cliff agrees, uh, do a conditional waiver, saying it's waived as long as your sign complies, and then I would have to review it, if it didn't comply, then we'd have to do a full, the drawings.
That's correct.
And that's where the board would like to go with this. I enjoy that.
You know, there's any of the sign guys that work in this town all the time, those guys know the rules.
Right. So, I can certainly provide him with the rules for the B one and B two for the sign ordinance, which are the same. Why don't we tell them to make a, um...
Is there any, is there any representative of the applicant here?
No, I asked, there's no one here.
I don't understand why that's the case.
So, why don't we have someone make a motion, all right, I'll second it, as to what Mike just said. And, now, discussion, is anyone opposed, any comments?
That's, that's what I was, as I was a kid, you say, "Use horses." I mean, it's been a whole time, you know, it's, nothing's changed, I'm just, I think they paid.
Right. So, if he's complying with the B one and B two for the size, then there's no drawings required, the board will give it for the LED backlight colors, whatever you wanna do. And if it doesn't comply, then you wanna see the orientation, the size, so you can get an idea of how it looks on the site, 'cause it doesn't comply.
You've seen the application, city, they all gave us signs.
I, I've only seen them with the board, but I don't go to the ARB meetings typically, but yes, I understand, Rich.
Very simple, very easy.
I understand, so... All right, so, um, there, I guess there's a motion, uh, there's a motion, and I second it, uh, pertaining to what Michael just said, I'm pretty organized.
Well, you're essentially granting a waiver.
Conditionally granted.
Congressional, yeah.
Exactly, okay. Conditionally granted about providing a sign to comply, if it doesn't comply, you have to submit the checklist.
All right, that's fine, that's, that's, that's the exact, that's the motion that's on the table, I wanted it to be stated.
And you're okay with that, Cliff?
I, no, I'm fine with it, I, I just wish, I just have a little trouble that we don't have any representation from the property owner, uh, but that's, that's gonna be their issue.
Yeah, and as the board does, if any waivers, there's substantial drawings, something, I, the board has to curate those waivers on the application.
Correct, oh yeah.
It's not me, I can't, I just can take it to the board at the next meeting.
Okay.
Pull his foot on that.
Mr. Rejebits?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenterz?
Yes.
Mr. Videmski?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Alott?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Passed.
I'm not storming out.
Okay, the next hearing is, uh, Ken and Antoinette Kaufman, sixty Mercer Street, application for variance.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
Thanks for being on the other side of the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, could you just advise, identify yourselves, call entering appearance, could you identify yourselves and, and, you know, as the property owners, and what you seek to do? Welcome, by the way.
So, I'm Ken Kaufman, I'm the carpenter owner of sixty Mercer Street, this is my wife.
Antonia Drazio, I'm the property owner of sixty Mercer Street.
Okay, um, now you'll both be going for a testimony, and, and your planner is here, or...
Jonathan Pearlstein from Oasis Architecture, Montclair, Jersey.
All right, what I'd like to do is, I'll let, let's to, let me swear all three of you in, um, please raise your right hand. You saw me swear at the testimony you were about to give in this proceeding, will be the truth, so I hope you got it. Okay, I'm gonna ask you individually, ladies first, please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Antonia Drazio D apostrophe O R A V I L.
Very good.
Sir?
Jonathan Kaufman, K.A.U.F.M.A.N.
Very good.
Jonathan Pearlstein, P.E.R.L.S.T.E.I.N.
Very good, thank you very much. Please, you know, please proceed, welcome. Uh, the only thing I'd ask, and I, I remember that everything is taken down, so please speak clearly and distinctly. Uh, you know, we wanna be able to hear what you're asking for and help you with it.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna start out by reading an opening statement. Good evening, thank you for your time and advice on this proposal for our new home at 60 Mercer Street. Our history to location dates through November of 2000, when we purchased the property from Ed and Mary Miller. In a decent and helpful way, made the experience unexpectedly easy. They also left us a legacy of a sturdy and well-maintained structure. We refer to it called the 1890s house, in moving condition, our new home. In the 21 years since, we took an active role in improving the property. Major work included renovations of both bathrooms in 2005 and 2007, the kitchen in 2014. Each renovation was a complete remodel with new drywall, floors, insulation, windows, appliances, cabinetry, electric wiring, as well as updated plumbing, infrastructure, fixtures. Secondary work to the property included new steps, new back steps of masonry, rails on the front and back porches, driveway repaved and sealed, a new roof on the detached garage, new subfloors by the house's two entrances and sunroom, and new gutters and rain spells. On the day before September 1st, 2021, we had a new faucet installed in the kitchen sink and a mason's estimate on hand for a renovation of our back porch. The day I became to Somerville was harmful for all of us. A Mercer Street as bad as it was, it could've been worse. It was a miracle no one was in harm's way when the house at 62 Mercer Street exploded. Just a half hour before, there were neighbors outside watching the water finally recede after a few hours of intense rain and flooding. At the flash point, some residents had already evacuated, and remaining neighbors happened to be indoors in most relatively safe areas. At 60 Mercer Street, which was next door to the explosion, I'd like to think that the sturdy build of the house prevented any kind of total collapse. Our longtime contractor and friend, the recently deceased Jerry Shaw, always said the house had good bones. He was the one we turned to to guide us when confronted with a fatally damaged home. Unable to do the work himself, he helped us assemble a team that he knew would see the project through. Here we are now with part of that team to move forward. We have a proposal before you that gives an eye to the former house in outer appearance, but updates the interior spaces for contemporary living. It also designed, it's also designed to mitigate the narrow possibility of future flooding on rare occasions. We hope that the public sees this proposal as a strong issue to the neighborhood and the borough of Somerville in general. Now my wife has some questions.
Yeah, I just wanna add that on the day that we learned that we have to tear our house down, we decided that very day to rebuild. And a major factor in that decision was not only the town of Somerville, which we chose to make our permanent home when we settled here in New Jersey from outside Philadelphia, but even more importantly, the Mercer Street neighborhood. As Jose Fencos testified in December, his wife, Jerusa, who's here tonight, and her children were with us in our house on the night of September 1st during the flooding on their first floor. Our neighbor on the other side of us at 58 Mercer Street, Maren Foster, was also with us. And honestly, there was something really comforting about, I think, all of us being together that night, and especially when the water finally started receding. At that point, we were discussing sleeping arrangements, knowing that the Fencos probably couldn't go back to their house that night, and playing Monopoly to the kids to catch the time. And it was about 11:30 PM, as you all know, when the explosion occurred. And initially, we were actually trapped in the house because of the debris up against the front door. Um, and the back door, we knew we couldn't go out because the water had come up almost, probably, just about to the top of the steps. And most of the windows were damaged, we even tried breaking one and that didn't work. But somehow, Maren found the strength to push that front door open, move the debris aside so that we could all get out of the house. And one of our neighbors across the street, Abe Constance, was on our front lawn urging us all to get out and making sure we were all accounted for. Um, we were wet, a couple of us were barefoot, someone gave us shoes to wear, someone from around the corner took us into her house to give us dry clothes and patch a cut on my husband that he somehow bought during his hike. And Kathy and Scott Post, who are also here tonight, whose, their house was the only one that was able to still be occupied at that point. They made room for Maren and my husband and myself to stay at their house for two nights, while we figured out more long-term temporary living arrangements. So, what, Somerville is a wonderful town, but honestly, it's for people who make our home. We wanna return to our block and our neighbors and our neighborhood and our home. Thank you for your time tonight.
Do we have, is that your, is that your testimony?
That's my opening statement.
Opening statement, okay. Do you have anything else? Do you want the architect to explain why these come up with? I got to see an engineer here, so I assume you're not gonna have...
Our architect is here and our contractor is here. And I do have a, a statement on my architect.
Okay.
Okay. Um, are you, are you gonna testify as the engineer, sir, or as the architect?
As the architect.
All right. Um, could you please provide the board with your credentials?
Yes, the name, I told you my name. I'm an architect. Uh, our office, Oasis Architecture, is in Montclair, New Jersey. I opened up the office in 1998. Before that, I was in New York City for about 20 years working on large projects. I was a, an architect in New York, registered architect from 1983 to 2021. I did not renew that because I was too busy in New Jersey. I've been a New Jersey architect registered since 1997. I have presented to zoning, planning and HPC boards in Frenchtown, Lumberville, Montclair, Glen Ridge, North Caldwell, Essex Falls and Barone.
That's enough.
That'll work?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's a long story.
That's perfect. I, I have no objection with the, with the architect's credentials and recommend that we accept it, we stick it late to those.
All right, proceed.
Yes, uh, clients called us up.
We can have a trifle somewhere.
Yeah. That's what, you know, the...
No, no, as courtesy, we should, you know, that's, that's fine.
I also have the hard copies of the card news, if you'd like me to...
In terms of the notice, then you should give that to the secretary.
Yeah, I'll keep it for her account.
Yeah, but choose it for the camera, so.
Be behind your back.
Angle like this, the board can see it maybe, the camera, maybe.
Okay, thank you. Provide you things here. Your roll-in receipt of the three drawings and the four renderings. And we brought additional exhibits tonight to answer the engineers' questions. So we'll enter them into the record.
As you, as you reach those exhibits, please let us know that they're new ones so we can...
Yes.
Enter them in as applicants' exhibits.
I also, this is large scale, but I have exact copies of this at scale distributed if anybody wants.
Would the, uh...
Or we can just work off of the big board very much.
Well, I think we have the eight and a half by elevens.
No, this is, this is the supplemental stuff. Okay.
No, I, the supplemental stuff, I would ask that we, I think it should be provided to the board members and everyone can admit that as...
Yeah.
What, I, I know that someone has a certain number of set exhibit numbers for, are we, can we start with A1 or should we?
A1 is fine.
All right, well...
Yeah, I gave them numbers, they wouldn't get confused with the ones you already have, but we're working on whatever number is the...
Well, for, for purposes of the record, I think we should call it, you know, applicant's exhibit A1.
Okay, exhibit A1. Okay. So I'll distribute these small and half-scale.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
For those who are here, sorry.
All right. And make sure that everybody liked this. Oh yeah, I did a good job with that.
Not the first time it's happened to me with a thankful ass either.
You just twist it a certain way, it locks.
Don't take it twice.
Yeah.
So you can follow along on those half-size, I put 10, that should be enough for... This is, uh, if I can have one more. If anyone's spand on this?
Yeah, they go higher. You can go all the way out and twist it a lot so you don't see it. Go all the way down.
Go all the way.
And then twist it, that's it. A lawyer must've designed that one. Just go all the way out and give it a twist.
Yeah, good twist.
There you go, keep going. Don't be stingy.
Okay, there you go, sorry, good. There we go. This exhibit, you, I guess you wanna call A1.
Right.
It's some of that you already have. These four renderings are the same as the renderings you have, that you've had before the, it was deemed completed. But I wanted to also show you, as the clients furnished me with two photos of Mercer Street at the night of the explosion. First, the point is that the street actually flooded. And it actually got to the point where, and we'll show this to you in architectural drawings as well, it actually was up to the front wall that entered their house. So, yes, this particular block is not in the floodplain. However, we are designing this because we can expect this kind of thing to happen again. So we are being cautious with the design. So that's this exhibit here. I'll go through them one by one, then I can go back to them and describe.
Those photographs are very important.
Yes, I have them, if you look, you'll see I have them dated and I have them described as well. So you can see how bad it was. I also wanted to show you the street state here, which, um, thank you. This is every house on their block of Mercer Street. By and large, these houses are the same vintage, they seem to be by and large 1880s, 1890s, folk Victorian type houses with front-facing gables, relatively narrow in proportion, with double-hung windows that is spaced evenly. So here you can see that exactly is the case with 58 Mercer, which is being rebuilt, 61 Mercer, which is being rebuilt, 63, which is, or has been, 65, the same, 67, they're all of the same vintage. And then you have the one up on the corner of West Cliff, 140 West Cliff. I show you the front which faces West Cliff, which is about the same language, and the side. And the other thing I wanted to show you, that these, oh, there's two exceptional houses here, 59 and 54 are different. 59 is sort of a vernacular, side-facing gable kind of a house. And 54 clearly is a later house with some kind of colonial detailing going on. Also, the fourth important to discuss here is that there is a range of stoop heights on this street, anywhere from a couple of steps up to a specific incline of steps. So we believe that our building, and you can see it here, which is 60 Mercer, which is a repeat of the rendering that he received some time ago, is of the same feel of the neighboring houses, the front-facing gable. There's a front porch, which some houses have, in this particular case, it's a wraparound porch, uh, and each stoop that is three, four, about seven or eight steps. And we wanted to set this up so that next time it floods, it won't come up to the first floor of the house. It will stay below, it will stay in what will be a crawl space. And I will talk more about the crawl space as we go on, because there was some, it was not clear how high the crawl space was, and if in fact it qualifies as a story in the house. The only sort of it is, it's a low crawl space, and I'll get to it, because to prove out what you see there in plans and elevations, we cut cross-sections through all different parts of the house to show you that the crawl space, as well as the attic, are not stories, with one small exception, which we'll leave here, we'll give up tonight, and that they also have low headroom. So, we'll get through that. So that the house is not taller than it needs to be. It has to have a certain height, so it has a gable that's proportional. But it also can't be too low, because we don't wanna have the same problem happening again.
How far above the 100-year floodplain in the first floor, you know that?
Uh, I don't know by heart, but I do believe it's about 12 feet.
12 feet above the 100-year?
Yep.
Is it?
It is as high.
Wow, okay.
Because, because we're not gonna be designing for the, you know, the 100-year flood, we're gonna be designing for the flood they just had, and we expect to have it again. So, yes, technically speaking, we can build this much lower, but we're trying to be practical.
All right, so in your opinion, the water, the water height that happened on that flood date, your first floor is approximately how much higher than that?
Well, I have a cross-section I can get to later if you want, where I actually locate in the cross-section how high the water is. So I'm gonna skip this then, and I'm going to move, so that was exhibit A1 and A2. So, I guess we can call, this one, which I think is a pretty important one for the very reason that, to match the point which is raised, this is a cross-section that tells you a lot of information.
That's prepared by Mr. Scotters?
Or... I prepare all these.
Okay, I was gonna say, no, I saw his emblem on the one you just flipped.
He did the survey.
Okay, all right.
Like we built the design of.
Okay, I just wanted to, so this is all yours, that's fine.
Except for the survey. This is a cross-section of the house.
This is A8.
We'll call this A3, but...
A3.
Yeah. You can see here in this cross-section, this matches the north elevation in the set that you got before this hearing. And I wanted to show you that this is the first floor here, which we're setting at At the height of the flood, the 1st of September, this green body here, Phil, is how high the water came.
What drawing is this on the...
A1 on ours.
Yes, it's A1 on your set, but I'm talking about, so it's A3. Whatever you like, whatever makes sense.
Your A1 will become the board's A3. The record will so reflect.
Would you like me to mark this?
Would you please?
Yes. Okay, this is, we'll call this, we'll call this ZBA A3. All right? You leave this here with you.
No, that, we, we ask that you do that.
Yeah. Plus you have those which are identical copies. So you can see that we're not just concerned about the first floor being just above the flood. We also want to make sure that the crawl space is within the realm of the flood. So, it's not, we could say, actually, it's a bit lower than that flood, but only by a little bit, perhaps three, four inches. So theoretically, they could store household items down there on blocks and they would stay dry if the water came up to the same location that it came up to on September 1st. But this also is a valuable cross-section in that it indicates to you that the attic space is only 68 in terms of structural headroom, which means it's not a story. Likewise, the crawl space, which is also located here, is, it ranges to, because it slopes a little bit, the floor slopes a little bit so the water can run off quicker, is about five-foot headroom, which means it is also not a story, which means it's also not floor area according to your definitions. It's a two-and-a-half-story house over a crawl space. And I'll get into that more later. But the main thing I wanted to introduce here is how this house sits. It was carefully set up to stay within reasonable height and also to make it possible for the house to be useful should another unfortunate situation happen. Uh, A3 also indicates other sections of the house. All these cross-sections are referenced on the floor plans, you'll see the arrows, you can reference, cross-reference them, and they're really here to show you that consistently the crawl space in the attic are not stories, with the one exception of the garden, I'll get to later. So this here is ZBA A1, first one.
All right.
And this, and this one over here is...
A2. And then A1 becomes A3.
Yes, ZBA A3, right.
Okay.
Okay, now I'm gonna work my way through the set and we'll go back to the... I'm not going to say much about this drawing, because this is the same drawing that you were given before this hearing. It's the A1. The only difference between this and what you received before the hearing is the drawing that you received before the hearing at the sign, the block at the bottom of the sign. Everything else is identical.
A1 has already been submitted, so it doesn't need to be marked as a...
This has been submitted, that's all right. A2 is also been submitted here. I can start to talk to you about the floor plan and thinking behind the layout of the house. So I went to the lowest parts of the house, talking about the crawl space. Nothing to talk about there yet, except for that one there. The first floor of the house is different than a lot of the houses from that time period because the clients wanted to age in place in this house. Therefore, the design for this house has a first-floor master bedroom and bathroom. So the first floor, by virtue of taking into account the fact that the clients wanted to live out their life here, is that if it was not the case, it would take up less of the site. But because we're taking this into account, it takes up additional site area. It also features a wraparound porch in the front, and I'll get into the details of that later, because one thing that was requested was the materials of the front porch and the back stoop, and I'll get into that. The back stoop is just a little sitting area off the kitchen. There's really not a whole lot going on here, there's an open-planned kitchen, dining, living, the living in the back, the master suite, stairway. There was a question with regard to the kitchen, because the kitchen is the room that has the highest ceiling on the first floor. Why is that? Because for this client, that's the heart of the house, they want to be the most bright and cheerful room. And it was some confusion, because it did not have the cross-sections, that it could've been interpreted as a two-story high kitchen, but in fact it isn't, it's only a story and a half, and I'll get to that down the road. So that's A2 that you already had. This is, this is the A3 that you already had, right? The elevations, with the materials called out, except for the port general.
A3 has already been submitted to the...
This is correct, it's already been submitted. I think here I can start talking about the architecture, I could talk about the use of, not the pure box, but the, sort of has its ins and outs, give it a more pleasing appearance.
We can see that.
Sorry?
We, we can see that.
Okay, good. It also calls out the different materials, the windows would be Anderson windows, which is the vinyl plaid blue window. Uh, you can look at the drawings to see what kind of pattern there is. We call for a cement-type siding, otherwise known as hardy. Uh, we also call for some cedar shake... We also call for some cedar shaped detail, but we'd like to do that in hardy as well for maintenance because they will be aging in place, they'd rather not have.
Yeah.
Do you have casing around the windows you have as well?
All the windows, yeah, we're big on that stuff, you know. This is, we designed this as if it was an historic district. When working historic districts, we always have four, four-inch flat casing, we always have a trip cap, we always have an express sill, and we have all those things here. And those make a big difference in how a house looks. They have great materials, but the windows aren't trimmed right. My wife is helping. Thank you. While, while we have to square her in, but?
No, 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 no.
Okay, good.
But I want to make sure she knows she's welcome.
So this is the crawl space plan, which is, I guess we have to call this Z-B-A-A-one.
Okay, this is your A?
This is, this is a more detailed crawl space plan. We didn't change the design.
Right.
But I put this in here so that you could reference all the cross-sections throughout the set.
Let's call that, let's call that half, you can say A-four.
Z-B-A-A-four. So there's really nothing to talk about here, except that, like I said, the purpose of these drawings, these floor plans, they're the same floor plans as what you have, but I added them to the set for the purpose of proving out the cross-sectional information.
I don't mean, just so I'm not confused, so A-three-A is our A-four?
Was that last one A-four?
No, 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 I'm talking about the last one.
A-three-A is your A-four.
Okay, very good.
And this A-four here is Z-B-A-A-five.
Okay, that's, thank you very much.
So that is, again, is the first floor plan, it's the same layout, but it's here for the cross-section reference. Because by the way, there's also a question with regard to the ceiling heights on the first floor and the second floor, which we also have indicated here in the cross-sections. This is, before I turn this, I better, I'm about to talk about Z-B-A-A-six.
And that would be your A-five?
A-five, Z-B-A, yeah. Z-B-A-A-six handwritten would be the official evidence. Again, I want to stress that we haven't changed the design, we just added information to clarify the questions that were raised. So what's going on here is on the second floor, as I mentioned before, the first floor has the master suite. The second floor is very small, relatively small, it's just two bedrooms, the bathroom, and a stair. That are habitable space. Over the master suite on the first floor is a storage and mechanical attic that has very low headroom, it's not a story, it's not floor area, and I'll show that to you in the coming cross-section. I also indicate here the actual structural height of the space. There, when you do these kind of houses, there are things called collar ties that hold the roof together so it doesn't pull apart, and the bottom of this collar tie is about six foot eight above the floor. So once again, the structural headroom is not a story, these are strictly storage and mechanical spaces. Not only are they not finished, they will not be finished because it exceeds the requirements that clients have for their living arrangement from this point on.
So they will not be used as residential space?
No.
All right.
They only have downstairs, first floor, and the two bedrooms and bathroom. So that's Z-B-A-A-six. Z-B-A-A-seven is, is the beginning of the elevations, the elevation design has not changed. However, I wanted to make sure that it was clear where the crawl space slab was in relation to the elevations because it could be misconstrued easily, and this has clearly shown that the crawl space is a lot higher than it really is because the crawl space, you know, we're on a sloping piece of land here, and the crawl space is actually a little bit above a lot of the grade because the grade falls away, and there'll be nothing under that crawl space floor, that's just going to be dirt. There's a whole issue on this site, right now, there's a big crater in the ground where the house used to be, and we are uncertain, you know, as to how much, where the footings are going to wind up, but we imagine there's going to be a lot of fill that we're going to use, to throw fill to build this up. And to keep, because there's no reason to make the crawl space any taller than it is. They just want to store some stuff there, that's all we want to do. So that's Z-B-A-A-seven. Same thing with Z-B-A-A-eight. Just showing the elevations that you're familiar with, adding the crawl space information. That's the sole purpose of that drawing. Z-B-A-A-nine are some of the cross-sections where you can see that the crawl space is shallow. You can see the crawl space is shallow, you can see the attic is shallow. You can also see answers to two of the questions that were raised. The ceiling height on the first floor is nine foot six, the ceiling height on the second floor is eight feet. That is Z-B-A-A-nine. Z-B-A-A-ten, which corresponds to your A-nine? That's correct. Z-B-A-A-ten indicates other areas of the house where there are attics which are low and unfinished. So you can see these including not stories, likewise with the crawl space one, to make sure that it was consistent, that there were no areas that were left out, so that it's clearly what, or for the testimony to here. Z-B-A-A, okay, Z-B-A-A-eleven, which is, it says A-ten Z-B-A on the print, but we're calling it Z-B-A-A-eleven, is important because you can see furthermore the same story about the attic and the crawl space, and you can begin to see that the kitchen is not a two-story-high space, it's one-story to one-and-a-half stories. And I think that becomes even clearer on the next, which is, well, it's not there. Where is? That's A-B-A-eleven. Okay, yes, going back to Z-B-A-A-ten, you can see the cross-section through the kitchen. You can see that it has a portion of it that's fifteen feet.
Upper right.
Correct, the upper right, yeah, and it comes down from there down to the clay height of nine foot six, that's the wall. And that is also an important roof over the kitchen because that could be where the clients wish to have their solar panels. It's kind of doing two purposes at once. So that's kind of the drawings, and that's every drawing in the set. Now I can go through the comments from the engineer at this place.
So A-eleven essentially ends the set, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, that's, I got to that earlier. Although that became A-three along the way, but A-eleven is the set.
That is true. Okay, very good.
And that's everything you have there in that size.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a question on your A-one.
Yeah.
Had a detail of the footprint, and it shows the elevation above grade for the first floor. It's on A-one, it's the middle of the drawing. It says mean grade, mean grade at footprint analysis.
That's right.
Minus five-nine, which means the first floor is about five-point-seven-nine feet above.
Well, yeah.
In the back, it's eight-point-seven, nine-point-two-eight, these are shown.
Yeah, there's a reason for that, we took the lowest, we're dealing with a situation here where there's a hole in the ground.
Right.
So we're working on this hole, so the first floor seems to be higher off the ground than maybe, you know, who's a flat?
All right, I got you, but what I'm saying, this is, is my understanding of the first floor is averages more than six feet above ground than the basement. Regardless of ceiling height, it's considered above-ground grade, so therefore it becomes a three-story structure.
Well, that's only, I, I double-checked that.
Yeah.
In your resolution, it's not considered a story, but it's six foot eight and it's not habitable.
I'm talking about the UCC code.
Yeah.
So it's not even a story, it's just a mud, it's a. The UCC says if it's more than six feet above grade on average for the first floor, the basement's considered a story, it's not a borough ordinance issue. I'm bringing this up because I don't want any issues in the construction office, this is miscommunication. So the construction office says that this is considered a story above grade, then that makes this a three-story structure, and the board has to give that relief for the height. It's not two-and-a-half, it's three-story. And I looked into this today, it means that you'd have to sprinkle the bedrooms with an NFPA thirteen-D system or the fire rating on the sheet rock.
So five B to five A.
Right. So what I'm saying, it's not a borough or a land use issue, it's a UCC issue, and I'm trying to bet this now so this doesn't come up in construction, everybody stops the process.
Yeah, can we get back to that, that panel?
So what I'm saying is if it's above, I just want the board to, I would like to see being an abundance of caution, that that approach be taken, and the board should, should grant this, will grant a three-story, not a two-and-a-half, and that.
You need to kick back those.
Well, I don't want to kick back, I, I don't want, I don't want this to say this is, the board approves something, then the, the construction department says it can't be built that way, or it's a three-story structure, you have to put sprinklers, and no one's aware of this.
Because sprinklers are only could do that for sheet rock.
That's.
Very good, you changed it from five B construction to five A.
So that's actually later sheet rock. So I'm bringing that up, and then also, I, the F-A-R goes back to GFA, and I think that second floor with the same low ceiling, I can still, for the GFA. So I'm trying to get the F-A-R right, so it's a variance, I'd like the board to consider that. So I don't want it to come back later to say, you were, you said the F-A-R was twenty-nine percent, and it came up to thirty-four percent, and then we have a problem.
I'm pretty sure it's lower than two numbers, I could be wrong. But I'm pretty sure it is because I went through the zoning.
Right.
And I saw that if it's not, I mean, I, I have the copy of it here.
Right.
I don't think, I think the F-A-R is where you think it is. I think it's actually below what is allowed, and therefore the heavy-duty variance would go away.
Right, but what I'm saying, I think, I think the house is beautiful. What I'm trying to do is, is deference.
Move on your speed bumps.
Right, I'm trying, I'm trying to.
Move your speed bumps.
Right, so if, if Clifford agrees and the board show proves this, I like to say detail that it has an unfinished second floor, it's this. It has a walkout basement, which is this. I'm trying to make it so we don't have these problems down the road. I want it to be clear in the resolution so when the construction sees this, we don't get caught up in whether a variance was granted or not, this is what the board approved. And trying to move around any obstacles of how we capitate the F-A-R, which essentially in this project, if the board show likes it.
It's a reasonable F-A-R, I mean, it's really just a free-bedroom house, I mean, it's not a whole lot.
I don't, we're not, no, it's all, misunderstand, I don't think we're, had some judgment on that at all, we're, you know, Mr., Mr. Cole was trying to make the way, if you will, a little bit clearer if indeed the board approves the application. Otherwise, you'd give follow-up and, you know, more regulatory issues, correct?
Right, I think the applicant's waited long enough for this, right? So I am just at an abundance of caution, trying to say this is what's there, it's more than six feet. If the board showed grants, it's a three-story house, and grant that so we can move forward without hiccups.
And then you have a clear try. You actually forced me to remember that, I got to talk about two things before, I was about to walk away from this. Because the other thing that you had put in your memo is, well, what's the porch in that area?
Well, I have all kinds of, but you, I, that you. Listen, you, your presentation to me was hardy plank, I think materials speak for themselves.
So you want us to know about the deck and the porch, too.
I want to know about every, I want the board to hear everything, and I think you did a brilliant job with it.
Well, we're doing polished chrome on the front porch. You can see on, on Z-B-A-A-three, our A-eleven, the front and back, we call that all the components, so. The front is a traditional type of porch, the back is a modern type of a deck.
What kind of columns you're using in the front?
Okay, exactly, they are five-and-a-quarter by five-and-a-quarter. Shaped porch posts, load-bearing, UV-protected vinyl with internal structural, galvanized steel tube, field-primed and painted, completely metal plates and screws. So it's like a Victorian turned column.
Right.
Doric design?
The front doric?
No, the.
Oh, doric, no, it's not doric, it's more, what, carpeter Gothic? It's a turned detail, it's not, it's not a, a Ionic or Corinthian or Doric or anything.
All right, this.
It's, it's like what you'd see in a Victorian house from that era, a faux-Victorian would feature some turned work because lanes are becoming popular around then, and they wanted to try everything on a lane, including columns.
Porch door instead?
Yeah, the porch. Okay. Well, the stoop rail is pressure-treated, pine-painted, the balusters, pressure-treated, pine-painted, the rail cap.
You lost me.
Oh, okay.
What's the floor on the front?
The floor on the front is tropical hardwood tung grue.
Wow.
And the back is trex.
You can't have both.
Why not?
Is it going to be hardwood or is it going to be trex?
No, the one, I'm sorry, the, the back deck is trex.
Okay.
The front is hardwood, yeah. These days, they call it, typically when you do porches like this in a historic district, it's some kind of tropical hardwood, it's either mahogany or pepe or kumaru, it's tucking groove. Butt it together, it's designed to slope away from the house in two directions. So you frame it like a porch, not like a deck.
Now, the tugging grue, what about the railing system?
Railing is, railing system is painted, pressure-treated?
No, please.
Why not?
It'll, it'll move like crazy, what about the vinyl composites and so forth?
Oh, like do it, do like an A-Z or something?
Oh, yeah, A-Z and Wolf, there's a whole bunch of them.
Yeah, as long, we don't want to do like a, a pre-cut system, those are ugly. But you can cut those things like wood and glue them together.
Yeah, you can. Well, what I'm saying, you do whatever you want.
Or you could use cedar, but that's very expensive now.
Yeah, if you want to use pressure-treated and painted, pressure-treated, it's going to move, it's going to, it's going to warp and check, so just be aware of that.
Yeah, we've done, I don't want to, you know, I can't say that it's always going to work, it depends on whoever the contractor is buying it, in terms of, you know, how tight the grain is. But yeah, we typically.
Ain't going to happen.
We've done them all three ways, done them with pressure-treated, we've done them with cedar, which is hard to get these days, and expensive, painted, and we've done them with the composites, A-Z or cedar or any one of those. And the cap itself would be tropical hardwood no matter what.
Okay, so you're saying the spindles are going to be pressure-treated, painted?
Painted, pressure-treated, or if we can't get good pressure-treated, I guess we just get one of the composites and paint them.
Well, I mean, you do what you want to do, I'm just saying.
I think it's good to have the flexibility because we're finding now, you know, sometimes you just can't get stuff.
Well, you can be sorry if you make it out of walnut, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
Nice, go on.
Do we know? Do you have any preference?
Very.
I'm trying to just get.
All right, the screens or the lattice work?
Lattice is, it's certainly not PVC, I sure hope not. I think they recall that in the old set, but typically we use, we will use cedar for that. We typically use the privacy type, which is a closer knit type of an opening, and we typically do not put them on the forty-five, we put them on the ninety, this looks more traditional.
It's going to be painted?
Yeah.
What about the retaining wall in front, that's a.
That would be a dry block system.
On the side as well?
Yeah, the typical dry block, which is a no-footing type of a system, it's just set on a gravel base.
Yeah.
And it's designed to move.
And is the window four-hundred?
Four-hundred, yeah.
You're going to have two divided legs?
Yeah, the, the SDL's inside and out fixed, yeah.
Excellent, okay. And you call, you call that A-Z lattice, I'm real surprised you would say cedar.
Uh, you know, you can get that sometimes, you know. In the end, if you painted it, it's pretty close to cedar. Always got to leave space enough, the home depot stuff.
Probably up and down for cost, too, right, between the homeowner and the builder. Yeah, okay, all right, I'd beat you up enough.
What about the back, back material for the railing, want to talk about that?
Yeah, let's talk about that.
Yeah, it's also called that, it's, it's those cable rail systems.
Yeah.
Where the, the post is steel, and the cables are stainless, typically four inches on center, with a shaped hardwood cap. And there, the deck material would be a trex-type material in the back.
Okay.
Because it's two different things, a porch, you know, is a roof thing, and you don't put the spaces between the wood, and typically, front porch is tugging groove, but a deck can have gaps. Can we talk about the, the garden room? The garden room, the client really wants a garden room. But we understand that there are F A R issues and if you're going to call the basement a story now, it almost doesn't matter, does it?
Don't give up on it.
All right, so it's still in there.
The thing is, you're going to have to, because it's now a three-story, like Mike said, you're going to have to sprinkler the bedroom, excuse me, the bedrooms upstairs.
Or.
There's another layer of sheet rock.
Yeah.
So. Well, what you're presenting is what you're going to get a vote on.
Right. So I suppose we could try it with the garden room and see if it applies. And then if it doesn't, we can pose a second vote maybe abolishing the garden room. But she really wants it. I mean, she's going to put ancient garden back there.
All right, that's what's in front of us that we're going to vote on. Okay? I'd say don't give up on it.
I would leave your application as you presented. Okay. I'm not your attorney, but I, you know, I'm, I'm just making a probably suggestion.
Okay.
The reasons for all the details is because of the used variances, you're kind of getting flexibility, but if you show a gray siding and you want to put a pink siding on, I'm just saying the problem is, and a lot of things we say, I have that flexibility, but some of the aesthetics that should the board have granted is the aesthetics are part of that approval process.
Right.
So I'm just, that's why the chairman's asking these questions because.
Because of what siding to match my hair?
I'm just saying, whatever the board sees is what, that's what the approval is to, what they see is what he intends to build what you presented.
We're actually looking at gray and brown siding. We have it down to choices already.
Right, now the, there's a lot of foundations shown, particularly on the driveway side.
Yes.
I'm assuming that's going to be farged, blocked.
Farged, blocked with parts poured with the concrete once.
And is it going to be painted? Is it going to be left the, uh, basically gray?
I don't like farge myself. I think it's.
I mean, you farged it regardless, but what I'm required to do that. But are you going to paint or are you going to leave it?
You know, parts.
And you can read the side.
I appreciate it.
I suppose you can, what you're, what we're saying, what we're trying to get across to you is what you presented here are a lot of different colors. Not a lot of different colors. It's pretty much dark gray and, and the window trim is kind of like an off-white and you look like a very dark color for the foundation wall. Uh, if it's going to be farged, left unpainted, that I don't, I don't have a problem with that, but it's not going to be that dark color. It's going to be a light gray.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have any question?
First of all, I just know Jonathan, you want to whip, go through the engineer of the report?
Yeah, I'll go through this.
On two, this is just what the proposal is. On two, on the bulk tables, yeah, we understand that might have some flexibility there depending on how we calculate things, but essentially given one precaution, you're looking at that F A R and the height, you keep the walkout and the setbacks.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair and reasonable. I mean, really, because in reality, the reality is it's just a three-bedroom house and all these other issues have to do with, you know, the site flooded, the site is sloped. Um, you know, we're trying to put a little three-bedroom house on a tricky piece of land in a tricky location. So the spirit of the design is not to build something big and bulky, you know, no matter how technical you want to be about it, they are. It's really, you know, kind of a dainty house, you know, there's not a whole lot to it.
Okay, so on four, I think we went over the architectural comments on four. On five, uh, I understand the unfinished second floor. You've got the test on that, it's been a mechanical unfinished on the second floor.
Yeah, the wall headroom there too. I mean, it goes from like zero to.
We did the ceiling height, it's nine and a half in the first floor, eight foot in the second floor. And the walkout basement is, it is where the, some pieces say it's eight feet, maybe it's five and a half, but it's. Cool utilities would be underground to the, to the, to the house. Utilities would be underground, the wetting, gas, of course, gas.
That's one question you were discussing because the car's utilities are above ground. At what point do you put them underground?
Well, that's what we're trying to do for the, trying to clean it up with the utilities. I do believe in your side of the road, so we're trying to get.
They are, the poles are on that side?
I do believe, exactly.
Yeah, they are. Yeah, there's one right in front of the house.
Why don't we go, why don't we go underground?
Okay. Clean it up. That's the suggestion, to go underground.
If it were across the street, I would, I would yield to that, but we got to do is dig a trench and voila. Voila.
Then on item three, I think we're still trying to figure out where it begins and ends here.
We'll come down the pole, go onto the sidewalk, on your front lawn and up to your house.
Yeah.
You know, utilities.
Utility underground, your meter will be probably not only a foundation wall so they can read it, but that line to the, to the meter will be underground.
So it's, so all the wires up above hasn't come down the pole?
Yeah.
So there's wires that are currently connected to our house?
Correct. Right, it'll be underground.
It will, it is, we'll see.
Maybe we're trying to do that in town.
We're trying to get all, we're trying to clean up all the aesthetics, put everything in the ground where it's possible.
Okay. I thought you meant, okay, got it.
That also include like cable lines.
Yeah, the conduit rising, you put in the ground, you come out and just pull it through.
We just didn't know which utilities.
Right.
Well, the only ones in question, I mean, gas and water and sure recovery obviously.
It's there already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On item three, it looks like your A C compressors are on the first floor elevation.
They're on the elevation.
So it's going to be very high and dry, so.
Yes, lift it up there, yeah.
The planning comments, I think you've had the testimony of what's going on with the planning comments on situation. Yeah, on D, on page nine, we have the roof leaders just trying, I think you have a catch basin in the street right near the front of the property. Just trying to try to get the roof leaders into the drainage in the street so that we don't ice in the weather.
You want, you want them to drill in back of the catch basin?
Yes.
Wow.
That or a curb face.
So sloped, so sloped the wrong way, Mike.
Well, it's to the street.
Yeah, and how are you going to get it over there?
Well, then it's to the street, then it's to a curb face direction. I'm saying if you can't get to the catch basin, which most don't, just run the roof leaders out and just bore a hole in the granite block or the concrete.
Oh, okay, through the curve.
Correct, right. If the catch basin is too far away, it's too down, too out fighting grade, then all you do is run the roof leaders under the sidewalk to the curb face.
Yeah, so there'll just be a little PVC pipe coming out between the Belgium block kind of?
Yeah, usually it's a three inch, usually a four, four-inch reveal, so you can put a three or four-inch pipe in. You just pipe them out so it doesn't sheet pro onto the neighbor's property or over the sidewalk. It's just tying the, uh.
Yeah, but Mike, this, this is a steeply sloped block. Going against gravity by doing that. I understand we try to do that all the time, but I know that, but whatever water wants to run down toward Peter Brook and over toward Davenport Street, it sure as hell does.
Right, I'm just trying to get it so it doesn't go into joining property towards the north. Then you have the stormwater management issues. I'm trying to avoid that by saying, oh, the water's going to the street, just to avoid.
No, I, I get you. You're going to bring all those leaders, all the gutters and leaders from the back of the house, you're going to bring them somehow, somehow around to the front, ain't going to happen.
Not to the extent, I agree with you.
Yeah, too, because the leaders would be above, above grade.
If we don't have the pitch, we don't have the pitch. I'm saying to the extent possible. I understand.
Yeah, I think, well, I would say, I'm not in favor of that at all. I say just let the, in this particular case, because it's sloped with a lot, just let all the leaders run out to grade and, you know, just make sure contour-wise that we don't flood the neighbor, that's all. Hey, you got a comment?
Yeah, I think the lot's running back to slopes.
Yeah, toward the back.
Yes, to the back.
Steeply. So I try. Steeply towards the back.
Right, it is, it is. I'm just trying to avoid the complaints in the future after you build the house, but now I have a waste lot in my backyard, which has happened more than once.
Well, look, you got, the, the lot is sloping toward the east and toward the north. So, and you can't really get the water from the back roof to the front, so you got to let it go out to the back and the side, so some of it's going to go over to the neighbor. The little guy on the, on the street has most of the water.
I agree, but where there's pitch, I'm just saying get some of the water where possible.
The downstream neighbors are sitting in the back row.
Yeah.
Where the little guy, for the most part.
Just to change the topic a bit, I forgot to mention, there was an issue of the herpes on this and you got me thinking about it, you just talking about the slope. We have a bit more driveway than technically we could get away with because we don't want to back up onto the street going uphill. That's why the driveway comes down and has a little K turn at the bottom so you don't back up into the neighbor on the way out.
So we beat this to death pretty well and I feel very strongly that if you try to, if you try to penetrate the leaders into that, into the front curb, the leaders, the leaders to have pitch are going to be almost up to the first floor in the back. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah. I say just let them run, let them run out to grade in this particular case because it's an extraordinarily sloped block. Forget about getting through the curve, even though we like to do that.
Okay.
I'm willing one vote, but.
No, look, I'm just, I've seen the problems in the future and I, I'm just trying to avoid those problems and those stuff.
We don't want to cause problems.
Right. Thank you guys all.
Well, we had, we had dry wells before.
Okay.
We do something like that again?
Absolutely.
Because I mean, we had.
They're still there.
Yeah, they're actually still there. They probably.
If they work. The problem isn't some of those works.
Because we always get, we'd get water at the bottom of our, um, of our property. And we would get, um, from the neighbor up one from us whenever, or some of them discharged, that would come over to our side too. So we're familiar with that, you know, downstream, but we also don't want to make the problem much, you know, worse for the bankos who have, you know, worse problems needed on our side works. We could do like dry wells or something in the backyard and that, you know, that would help.
That's engineering.
Yeah, I'm, as long as it drains within seventy-two hours, it doesn't come with mosquito and septic smell, I'm all for it.
It was that way before. I can't speak for now, but before.
It usually drains?
Yeah, it drains.
I think that's a comment, should the board approve for the extent possible to look into that, right?
Okay, yes.
Uh, we've talked about, on general comments on the basement elevation, it is what it is, it would take whatever it is it is, okay? The sidewalk, I had a comment about leveling it where it need be. I don't know if it's on your property, but there's a, there's a hump where there's something in the trees.
There's one spot.
Yeah, it's not everywhere. It's just, I think around the tree. Maybe we didn't do great. We talked about the F A R, nine foot. And like, I had not, item seven, it was about, are you going to reuse the existing sanitary sewer lateral?
Yes, I talked to, I got that from, you know, David Sires.
Yeah.
He said, yeah.
As long as you can tell a rise it to make sure it's not full of mud, I just try to avoid a problem here.
They would put a camera in.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what our preference is.
And then on item eight, I had a question about a comment about putting a note in the plan that obviously if you damage the sidewalk during construction, you replace what you, when the job's finished, the sidewalks. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So the testimony basically is, I guess we go from here and see if we have any comments from the audience?
Or are there further questions from the board?
Okay, either one. Any questions from the board on the testimony that's been given?
Just, just one for the architect. From Gray and how tall is the building?
As we have measured. And it's. We, um, I think we had, we did the average. We, we counted thirty-seven, eleven and a half from the average grade at the current. The final grade is going to be higher than this because as I said before, there's a crater. Typically we start from the lowest, the existing of the boats. So it's thirty-eight feet from the current conditions, so.
To the top of the ridge?
To the top of the ridge. And so there's only a little teeny piece, this little teeny triangle there is about thirty-five feet.
Well, that's not a violation then because the boat says you go to the mean.
No, that's not the height, it's the story.
Yeah, the story.
There you go, some story or height. Two stories, thirty-five feet to five, five A. You go to five A, go to nine A.
Okay.
Very much a three-story, right?
It's, you know, the way that, what the chairman's saying is on the borough ordinance, the borough, it's not the U C C. It says that you take the mean elevation, not the peak. So I don't have, in print of the report, because you're under, I'm just bringing out that we have the walkout, that technically your second floor becomes a third story.
In terms of code, not in terms of zoning.
Right, right. And that's U C C code on the mean six-foot thing.
I think, I think we're questioning, if Perry, when you come out here tonight, you don't have to come back to us.
Right.
So we'll make sure that we'll get you covered.
You're trying to get covers.
That way.
And then the, even then the.
The department's our problem. I know Jonathan, you think I'm being a pill, but I'm just telling you.
I might be the same way if I was in your chair, I don't know.
I, I see it a lot that we've had challenges in the construction department, three months down the road from this hearing or five months. You get the construction drawings, it's, you're already six months now into it and now we have issues with getting the construction permit because it's not clear in the resolution or it's not what the U C C code says. So.
He just trying to cover.
I'm just making sure.
And if we can work back from there, we will.
Right, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that the board should grant approval, that we have this walkout covered, the story covered, the F A R covered, we have everything covered, so.
So the code official doesn't say there's a zoning problem.
Right. So we're moving forward, not backwards. Hence the bill.
So any other questions from the board? I think so. Any, any questions from the Z B A for the public? None? All right, so I guess we, any comments from the, from the audience? None. I guess we close the public portion of the hearing.
You guys have anything else to tell us? You have anything else to say?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, please pass this.
All right.
That was sixteen.
You know, attorneys like to talk, so they have a summer. We appreciate that. All right, so we're gonna close the public portion.
And we're gonna discuss.
Yes, we're gonna discuss it on ourselves. Comments from board members? Anyone?
I'll just say, it looks beautiful, good luck.
The porches, Kate, especially now.
Yeah.
Sitting rocking chair, hanging out. Porch in my house.
And the original house had a porch, but they, it was taken down at some point because the posts were in our basement, probably in the middle of our house, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. It's a, it's a well, well put together, nice house, and I have nothing negative to say, but very well done. If there are no other comments, I guess we could entertain a motion, although don't shoot, may have some comments.
The only comments I would have is that if there's a motion to approve, the, the approval should be subject to compliance with Mr. Cole's engineering report. And I believe that's sufficient. I mean, I think we've all, you know, as you said, we've really worked it pretty heavily, you know, I think the applicant is aware of all the comments.
Then we have to put in the resolution somewhere that this is considered a three, a three-story house.
Right, he's gonna list all the variances in the resolution.
That we would have the right to, right to shrink it and not grow it, at least.
Right, and I, I reach out to you on the F A R, just to get that very abundant concern number, so it's covered. Because I, we have to come up with a number in the resolution.
And, and I'm confident we can get that taken care of. Yeah, I, I, I don't think that'll be an obstacle, but I would want, you know, I always say, you know, there are standard conditions of approval that I, that I had every resolution. It's pretty fundamental, you know, you make sure that your taxes are paid, your assessments are paid, your escrows are paid, that if you need any other approvals from any other governmental agencies, that's a condition of your approval, things along these lines. And again, your compliance with Mr. Cole's report. I believe that's all we need to do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, so I guess it's time for a motion? Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I'll move it. I love the garden room.
You have a second on that?
I'll second that. I'll second it. Move the garden.
I think you got your answer on that.
All right, so, Jeff, I guess we're gonna have a vote on the resolution.
Mr. Rich Evans?
I say yes.
Ms. Carpanis?
Yes.
Mr. Vidinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Alat?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And, you know, that should be available. I think we have, we have, I think our next regular meeting is on the fifteenth. I certainly would, would hope to make it for that, so.
Thank you very much.
If I have any other questions, I mean, also, one or all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, congratulations, good luck. Apparently, Reverend is gonna want to come over here.
I'll need some help with gardening.
No, I don't do gardening, I just admire.
So Reverend is bringing a chair.
I was talking to my office with a new plan, I'm working, my secretary was, oh, that's so lovely, and I said, oh, it's artificial.
Great job.
We should see you soon.
I was just having a watch.
That stays there. Pull them down now. Thank you, guys. Right, take care. Good evening, everybody. Oh, wow. You got, you got the good strap.
Thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Reverend. That's not my regular cage, it doesn't warm quick enough. You know, we'll do the usual, you know, in terms of the transcripts, what we've done up to now. Please turn that off.
All right.